Call the meeting to order. People should get seats, if at all possible. And it is. See, there are plenty of empty seats, but I can also see we have a quorum. I'll call for the pledge of allegiance to the flag by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
I'm going to begin, in the usual way, with introductions of the Board of Selectmen. You just saw J.R. Colby leading the pledge. The others are Vice Chairman Damon Jesperson, Chuck Baer, Alicia Greco, and Jeff Walker. From the Finance Committee, I'd like to introduce the Vice Chairman. The chairman is off on vacation somewhere today. So Vice Chairman Marshall Jesperson, Joseph Ollie, Linda Allen, Tom Howard, and Paul Meier. And is KB here? I'd like to introduce the town clerk, really important office in town, Leslie Haley, sitting behind me on the left at the table. Oh yeah. We need the return of service. Call on the Constable, William DeMaio.
I attest that the inhabitants of the town of Newbury were qualified to vote, properly notified and warned of the date, time, and location of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. DeMaio. I want to introduce a number of non-town employees who I will ask the meeting to allow them to speak as matters come up. Lisa Neeg, Town Council. Tracy Blais, the Town Administrator, to the left as you face the table. Eileen DeVoe, the Town Accountant. Michelle Branch of Forty, Principal Assessor. Mike O'Reilly, the Police Chief, who's off in the back. Brian Forget, Superintendent at Triton Regional. Michelle Cresta, Business Manager at Triton. Maureen Lynch, Superintendent of Whittier Regional Voctech. And Kara Cosmos, the Business Manager there. Two people who will play an important role when we get to question seven. Jeff Shaw of Context Architecture, I hope he's here. And Kevin Heffernan of Vertex, who is the Town's OPM on the project. I'd also like to introduce, not for the purpose of speaking, but to recognize their presence here, Mr. Gary Seetal, a teacher of history at Governors, who has brought a group of his students, fairly large group, it looks like maybe 20. Ask them to raise their hands so that people can see where they are. We're very glad to have you at the meeting and to let you see how the business of the town goes on. Town meeting is the pinnacle of the government of the town. We at Town Meeting, by the vote of the townspeople later on, we pass all of the important articles to be acted on. It gives the Board of Selectmen their marching orders. And it's a critical function. It is the simplest form of government. Every registered voter in town is eligible to be here and to vote. And it was done that way when the original settlers got off the boat, and it continues to be done that way to this day. It's the last remaining vestige of direct government by the voters. So you're witnessing an institution that's very ancient. It may not seem that venerable at times, but we'll see how it goes. The basic rules and procedures of Town Meeting are familiar to all of you who have attended these meetings for low these many years. The first is that in order to speak, you have to be recognized by the moderator. And if I don't give you permission to speak, you have no business speaking. However, you can get my attention and ask to speak very easily by standing in line at the microphone, waiting to speak after the person before you. It is very useful in terms of the timing of the meeting if you come up in advance while the person ahead of you is speaking, so that you're in place, ready to start speaking when I recognize you. The alternative, which we followed many times and we really shouldn't have, is the person who wants to speak waves at me, and I say, "Yes, I recognize you, please come to the mic." Then it takes, you know, 20 seconds or so before the person is actually there at the mic, ready to speak his piece. So let's try to do it the more efficient way, recognizing too that a lot of people would like to get home and be watching the Boston Red Sox this evening, because their game, barring rain delay, is supposed to start at 8:09 PM. So the last thing is, please now turn off your cell phones. Do it. Don't just check on it. Get it. Look at it. Make sure it's on. Thank you very much. We'll proceed now to the warrant. The early articles in the warrant are transfers from one fund to another, for the majority of them, and these should not be controversial. For Article One, I will call upon Mr. J.R. Colby, Chairman of the Board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the funds as set forth in Article One of the warrant as follows. Planning stipend: $6,500. Public building utilities: $10,000. Fire capital outlay: $9,400. Triton assessment: $195,532 reduced assessment. Whittier assessment: $21,449 reduced assessment.
Second. Motion is being seconded. Do we need discussion on it? These are simply transfers. The big, the net effect of the transfers is to free up $191,000 that we had previously appropriated to those uses and that are no longer needed. And then some get the benefit of some of that money. So, but the net effect of it is $191,000. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have a unanimous vote. Article Two, Mr. Jesperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $9,940 from free cash to purchase and install a repeater cabinet.
Well, will someone give us an idea of what a repeater cabinet is?
The repeater cabinet is a device used to strengthen the signal for cell phones and radio. It's used by our police and first responders, and it needs to be in a climate-controlled and conditioned box. And the one we have now has worn out and passed its useful life, so we just need to get a new one to make sure that the signals from our first responders continue to be transferred from one place in town to another.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak? All those in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. By unanimous vote. Article Three, Selectman Baer.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus.
Motion's made and seconded. We get the breathing apparatus to fill up the repeater cabinet. So, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous, the ayes have it. Article Four, Selectman Greco.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Does anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Thurlow.
Fred Thurlow, 26 Mosh Avenue. Where's this money coming from?
Who wants to answer the question?
When we, in the first article of the warrant, we had adjusted some of the town spending because the assessments for Triton and Whittier were less than that. This move, this moving this money is from the excess levy capacity, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the excess levy capacity that the town had. So we're not going to be using it to pay for the Triton assessment or Whittier because it came down less. So we're going to shift it and put it into this stabilization fund, which will help us. It's like the town's rainy day fund.
Okay. We need explanation when we get these things. We need explanation when it's presented. Thank you.
Is that clear?
Good. It's very clear. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Article Five.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $21,685.44 from the Newbury Fire Station Sewer Design Account to the Police Station Town Hall Project Contingency Account.
Second. Okay. Does anyone wish to be heard on the subject? All those in favor? I'm sorry. Damon, did you want to say something?
Per Fred's request, I was just going to explain exactly where this money was coming from, which is the sewer connection for fire costs less than we had budgeted for it, and so we're taking that excess money and putting it into a separate account.
All those in favor? All those opposed? That was Article Five passes by unanimous vote. Article Six, Selectman Greco.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $31,293.77 from the Newbury Fire Station Sewer Connection Account to the Police Station Town Hall Project Account.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Seven passes by unanimous vote. Article Six, Article Six. Getting ahead of myself. I really want to see the Red Sox. But I guess we have to do a little work before that. Article Seven, Mr. Jesperson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $12 million to pay for the cost of design, construction, and constructing, and originally equipping a new combined police station and town hall facility, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law C46 S71, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that no amount shall be borrowed or expended hereunder until the town has voted to exclude the amount required to repay and borrow approved by this vote from the limitations on the total property taxes set forth in Mass General Law C59 S21C Proposition 2.5. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law C44 S20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and to pay such costs by a like amount. The vote of the town adopted under Article Two of the warrant at January 31, 2017, special Town Meeting, that had appropriated funds for this project is hereby rescinded. This requires a two-thirds vote. Before the article reaches the floor... Before the article reaches the floor for discussion, there will be a presentation. We hope to be able to answer many of the questions we have been asked. If Article Seven passes, we rescind the $6.5 million override from January 2017. This is a debt exclusion override, which means that we will have paid it in 30 years, and it will come off the tax roll. The budget for this building will be capped at $12 million, and if we can bring it in under budget, as we have for all of our recent building projects, that will reduce the annual payment. The presentations that will be given before this reaches the floor are by Jeff Walker, discussing the shift from $6.5 to $12 million. Eric Swan will give a brief overview of the project to date. Jeff Shaw, the architect from Context, will present the proposed project. Marshall Jesperson will go over the numbers, and Chief Riley will speak to the value of the accreditation. With that, I'd like to hand over the mic to Jeff.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jesperson. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Judge. And thank you, Damon, for introducing the motion. And thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Every time I do that, I drop 'em. And go Red Sox! I would like to answer everyone's question that is primordial on everyone's mind with a quick and condensed overview of how we arrived at $6.5 million and how it became a $12 million building project. And instead of just doing that with a typical slide, other bullet points, or some of the things you've been sent maybe in the mail if they arrive, or which you've been seeing maybe on the town website, I'd like to just try to show it in a humanistic way through my eyes, because I've been around for most of this, and part of it is chair. So after I speak, Eric will give you the bullet point history. It was identified clearly and quickly that our police station was very deficient and basically deplorable. And within this process, it became clear that our town hall and our fire station were small, outdated, and somewhat in need of repair. Way back then, it was decided to examine the feasibility of a municipal complex at Morgan Ave., which was central enough in location and had the feasibility and availability of water and sewer. Concerns over the private fire station status at this time, it was decided to solve the police station dilemma and move forward to find a solution for Town Hall. As we found out, this was not an easy process. It certainly was laden with a lot of problems and discussions in public meetings. So with some wisdom, it was undertaking that we would hire CNS architects for some simple renderings with size and pricing to help move the discussion forward. After many public meetings, however, it became apparent that we needed to do what most municipalities do when contemplating a large capital project, and that's to hire a full-time architect and OPM to do a full site process and produce plans that reflect the town's program needs of the police station and town hall so we can present the taxpayers of our town with the correct professional information, and most importantly, the correct price to build the right project. This project was done in Salisbury. This project is now being done in Essex. A friend of mine is a selectman there. Riley and Merrimack. And for any of their capital plans move forward, they have an architect and OPM in place. This process was not cheap in our town. At that time, I think it was $900,000, and it failed to pass. At this time, I was chair, and it became clear to the Board of Selectmen that with 330 and 350 for building per square foot cost, and everything on the rise, including interest rates, we needed to make a decision. So in this vacuum, time is of the essence, and we realized that Eric had distilled some of the old work done by CNS, and that he had a figure to renovate Town Hall with an addition, and built a separate police station. However, the range was between $6.7 and $9 million. In a politically chiseled climate at that time to accomplish something, we chose $6.5 million. That's where it came from, to do the project. And as they say in Raiders of the Lost Ark, "We chose poorly." Fast forward, not quite two years later, with the passing of the $6.5 and finally being able to hire Context Architects into forming Building Committee, it soon became clear as the Architect and Building Committee began to implement a plan which identified program needs, especially identified within the site, and other building requirements recognized that are outlined in municipal building requirements such as contingencies, FFNEs, and other costs, that are put in place in municipal construction to protect the taxpayers for unexpected costs and overruns. So $6.5 suddenly became not enough to build the project and to put good use of taxpayers' money to vision for future needs. After much work, a project that included a full-designed police station and a large addition on Town Hall with a price tag of $14 million was brought back to the selectmen. There was much debate. The cost was extremely high. There was much discussion about building a police station first, and years later, doing a Town Hall, there was talk of buying older buildings. It was, at that time, decided by the Board of Selectmen to ship it back down to the Architect and Building Committee to build a combined new police station project for the Morgan Ave. site with water and sewer. Hopefully, that would be the best use of taxpayers' money. This proved to meet all the program's need in a new, new package and the lower cost to $12 million. This seemed to make the best sense, finally, at least to me. The irony of this, as I look back at it, was, if you remember Eric's process and the rework of CSS plans, where we chose in a vacuum the lower range of $6.5 of the $6.7 to a $9 million estimate, if you now multiply 450, which is the building cost today, by the square footage of the perceived building, which is 18,000 square feet, you get $8,100,000. So if you add the real extra costs, such as contingency and all the other costs that go in, that you have hopefully on the sheet in front of you, that's where you get the $12 million, which after all this work and time seems to be the most fiscally sound solution to solving all the program needs of the Town Hall and the police station in a relatively central location in which water and sewer, which the Selectmen and the Finance Committee support. Thank you very much.
Do I use this mic? Well, I'm not sure how you get it out.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Swan, Chair of the Building Committee. I also volunteer my time for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm sure a lot of you are used to seeing me. It's been four years running now, standing up before you. If you're a new resident in town, welcome to Town Meeting. I was going to give a short history, but Jeff, the usual elegant speaker, said a lot of the things that I was going to say. So everybody knows, I've said it again, I've said it at every meeting, I've said it at every special Town Meeting, that the town facilities were top priority since 2006. That means they were identified and they were an issue before 2006. And here we are. There's been many committees, many reports, numerous concepts. You know, if you want the official history, it's here on a piece of paper of all the meetings and all the presentations and all the reports. We'll put that aside. I think I'll jump to the bigger question, the third focus, which I'm sure everybody has, which is taxes. I mean, I'm right there with you. I don't want my taxes to go up. I don't think anybody does. There's no such thing as extra taxes into a savings account in order to put away and stash away for these large capital projects. You just, you have to come up, and you have to borrow the money. So I think with everyone's singular interest on the amount to borrow for the project, the question always comes up, too big, too costly. And I think the idea of putting the project costs and budget first is actually, my thought is flawed there. I think we should all be thinking about this the other way around. I think we should, what are the program needs that make the facilities that the town employees need to do their job to provide us, the residents, the community, all the services we believe we're paying for? I think everyone can understand that if a farmer can't buy his plow, he can't plow the field. So let's provide the facilities and the services that we expect, that we demand, from the people that we employ. So then, what is needed? What is the needed program that solves the problem? And then what is the cost? The past committees presented far too many project options driven by dollar values, driven by dollar values at the loss of program. I know, because I created most of those. I took the original needs assessment, the original budgets, and continually created new options. Most of the time, I was presenting four options at a time. And it was confusing. And the level field in order to just, first, to get to a project was always budget first. We compromised to the lowest project cost. I think Jeff went very clear how we got from the $6.5 up to the $12 million today. Part of that is that the project to be presented tonight is roughly the same size as many of the past projects. Construction escalation, procurement procedures, there is some additional space that's been realized and needed, and soft costs. Basically, design fees, testing, contingencies have all increased in dollar value to the proposed $12 million project. The $12 million is conservative, a lesson learned from the $6.5 shortfall. Those shortfalls are the realization of having professionals that we, as a town, hired that do these projects. I don't do police stations. I am architect, I'm a licensed architect. I work on different building types, but I don't do the ins and outs of police stations, municipal buildings. municipal buildings in Town Halls every day. Sorry. Thank you. So with the addition of the OPM and the design teams, the OPM stands for Owner's Project Manager. We've advanced plan and program. And with that, there's been a big debate, going back again, to combine or separate programs and buildings. Either way you stack it, locate it, distribute it across town, the space needs to solve the program are the same. The size of the building actually goes up if you distribute it among multiple facilities. So, quick word about site selection. I think we've been there, we've done that. October 30th, 2014, Town Library, Joint Meeting, Planning Board, Selectmen, Public Safety, Site Selection Committee, FinCom, Capital Planning, and a fair amount of residents that I can see in the audience here. After the... As the presentation was made, the presentation took multiple properties and provided a level playing field of cost and budget, cost of buy, cost of ordering sewer, cost of receptacle systems in terms of leveling. The end of the night was a unanimous discussion that Morgan Ave was the best location. So with that, Morgan Ave is the best site for Town Hall, police, and fire station. It's on town old land, there's no cost of buy, it's basically, you know, it's free compared to any other site around. We've heard that parking is not enough, it's dangerous intersection, the site is too small. Residents spoke, the committee listened. The current Town Hall actually has 35 parking spaces. The previous proposed Town Hall with an addition had 28 parking spaces and didn't resolve the dangerous intersection entrances. The new proposed combined building has 34 parking spaces, one less than currently, but both dangerous entrances have been removed. The new proposed master plan that's going to be presented tonight is the only plan to date that actually meets the town zoning for parking. There's been a proposed $10 million budget floated in the paper for separate projects. That budget does not include duplicated costs for OPMs, designers, testing, the second bid phase, it discounts renovation costs down to the minimum, and it also does not mention the additional yearly maintenance costs that comes with separate facilities. So, scheduled time and money. In terms of the OPM Designer Selection Committee, again, the Owner's Project Manager and the Designer Team, which includes the architects, structural and mechanical engineers, the town has to follow the Massachusetts General Law 30B for procurement in Chapter 149A that requires that the town hired the OPM before hiring the design team on any construction valued over 1.5 million. Three months were slated for this work. The selection committee first needed to create a set of rules for this qualification process from scratch. It took a fair amount of time before we could even begin to make the request for qualifications. Once the requests were done, there's a whole... You need to list the RFQ, you need to advertise it, you need to receive the submissions, you need to review those, you need to discuss those, and then you need to set interviews. Once that's done for the OPM, we need it to repeat, and that took 10 months. So you're all probably wondering what took from 2006 until the beginning of this year in order to get the OPM architect on board. So with that, the good news is, is if Newbury ever wants to hire another OPM design team, again, we have that in place. So Jeff and Kevin, maybe Kevin, you'd like to stand up and show everybody who you are? Jeff, you want to come up, give your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Swan. I'm recognizing next Mr. Jeff Shaw, the Context Architecture Architect in charge of the project. And I invite you, if you, instead of saving your, just an answer question, which will, or presentation, to show everybody why we shouldn't do this, if you would ask him some questions, to raise your objections to it, and let's hear him give some of the nitty-gritty as to what's gone into it and why the project holds up. I'll also remind you, during the times when the storm was very loud and the lightning was coming, I couldn't hear back here. I don't know about you folks up front, but if you're not hearing the speaker, just raise your hand and wave like that, and I'll recognize immediately what you're waving about, not to speak, but because you cannot hear. So with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Jeff Shaw, ask him to address the project and the questions by the audience.
I think they're still bringing the presentation up. My name again is Jeff Shaw. I'm principal at Context Architecture. We do police and fire stations all across New England, many, many of them, and we've been working with the Town Building Committee for quite a while on the project. So what I'm going to show to you is the result of the study that we started quite a while ago. I'm going to show four different progressions of the design so you can see where it started, how it was modified, and where it is today. And I'll explain the final presentation. And I'm going to get going even though they're not, they don't have everything up yet. Let me just flip to the next slide here. All right. We may need someone. Kevin, do you mind advancing the slides for me? Because this thing's not working. I don't know if it did get loaded up, but it's not working. So go ahead to the next slide. This is what we hired the OPM for. Advance my slides. Okay. So as I said, four options, four iterations of the design. The first concept started after we did what's called a space needs analysis. We worked with the police Town Hall folks. If you go to View, you can put it through. All right. Started with about 25,000 square feet after reviewing the program carefully with both departments, going through all of the various spaces, the actual programs they run, the staffing, vehicle requirements, storage requirements, mechanical systems, everything. And obviously, this is quite a bit of space. It produced a building, two buildings actually, separate buildings, a new police station of roughly 13,000 square feet and a Town Hall addition renovation of about a little less than 13,000 square feet. We went to a second option, a third concept, and finally, the proposed option. You can see the metrics there. Basically, we went from a large program in separate buildings to producing the program in separate buildings, then same reduction of program, a little bit bigger for a combined building, and then a combined building with slightly larger program. This was done in an effort to match the needs with the capital and to get to a point where both things, as was explained in both earlier presentations, meshed up in the best way that the Board of Selectmen and the committee felt was in the best interests of the town. We worked very carefully with the police and Town Hall staff to achieve this so that none of the needed space was lost. So in the first concept, the slide two, this is the site plan. I'm going to go quickly now, Kevin. The site plan shows the parking, it shows an addition to the Town Hall on the left. That would be a renovation, an addition, and then a new police station on the right side, which is the current empty parcel of land next to the fire station. This is the plans of the police station, and then the next slide shows the plans of the renovation to, in addition to Town Hall. This is, the next slide is the budget that was produced. $14 million, as was stated earlier, was too big a hurdle, so we were asked to go back and make it smaller, which led to the second concept. This is the site plan. It shows just a renovation to Town Hall, no addition, and a separate police station. This is the plan of the police station, and then the plan of the renovation to Town Hall, basically converting it back to a Town Hall. This is the budget that was produced. Although the budget was better, what was immediately apparent was that Town Hall was in no way going to be worth the money spent on it. There would not be anywhere close to the needed space there in that small of a size. So we produced a third concept in combination with a report to the Board of Selectmen. We requested to look at the savings and costs and space that would be achieved by combining the two departments into one building. We would achieve a lot of space reduction overall by being able to share many spaces, including Board of Selectmen or Selectmen's meeting room as a dual click training room for the police station, share lobby space, mechanical systems, elevator, a lot of different things. So that's what this building started to look at. The next slide is the plan of both floors, the police station at the lower level, Town Hall at the upper level. And the next slide is the budget. What we had to do in this option, after reviewing it carefully with both Board of Selectmen and the Building Committee, was determine, did this actually meet the requirements of both departments? And in fact, we realized that it didn't quite meet the department's requirements in both cases. So we went back again to the drawing board, came up with the option that's before you tonight. This is what's in your handout. This is the proposed option. And this does meet the program requirements. The site plan, it shows, as Eric mentioned, the parking. It shows the reconfigured site with the two new entrances and the building in the corner. The dashed white box in the middle of that new building is roughly the location of the existing Town Hall. And a parking lot would be built to the right side of the fire station. That parking lot would have approximately 80 parking spaces, which allows this site to meet parking demand of all three departments. The next slide is the building plans. You can see some things did get moved around. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but suffice it to say, both the police department and Town Hall staff are very comfortable with the ability of these plans to meet their requirements. It also gives the town some flexibility of future use with a attic design that would allow about 3,500 square feet of storage. That's sort of raw, not quite 100% finished space, but the elevator would go up there and stairs would go up there, and it would allow that to be used as storage. And then potentially, if the town needed to, that could be built out as a full story in the future. So that would give future expansion space. The next slide is the budget. It shows, again, 18,600 square feet of needed space, all of the components that are necessary to produce the project, including the construction cost, design, project management, utility, testing fees, bidding, moving furnishings and equipment, and then a critical component, temporary housing, which would be necessary in this because we'd be moving the police from their current location in the basement of the, well, the whole Town Hall to a temporary location, which would likely be, well, it hasn't been decided, I shouldn't say likely, but there are several different options for where they could move to in temporary quarters, and it may be less than the 750, but for budgeting purposes, we planned on what the likely maximum might be. And then a project contingency, which means that within this $12 million, this contingency is there because we are at the very beginning of the design phase. We will have another six months' worth of design and detailed drawings to do before it gets bid. Markets can change in that time. We're trying to predict them. Design may be able to change in that time. We want this total project budget, including anything that we run into in construction by building the project, to never exceed this amount, which is why we have a contingency. It's standard practice in the building industry and typical of approximately 7% to 10% for most projects. So that's where we get to the $12 million total. Again, the last slide here showing the comparison of the various options with the budgets included. And that's the end of my presentation. So I think there might be another presentation.
I recognize the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, Marshall Jessmerson.
Good evening, and thank you for coming to the Town Meeting. And the moderator in his wisdom has saved you from a deck of slides that we were going to present, but now we'll skip. So we'll get right to the salient points. What we have had in the past is looking at our capital debt repayment schedule. We've been paying in 2010, $1.6 million on our debt. That has been reduced as we pay off debt. We are now looking at debt payments of just over $800,000 for this project. What that means for the average household in Newbury is about $275 per year, a little less than a dollar a day. This is a capital project. Newbury always is going to have some capital projects because we have capital things that wear out. Their buildings, their equipment, we're in front of you all the time for this sort of thing. And roads, those are our big items, and this is one of them. These are things that cost more than $10,000, in this case, a lot more, and last more than three years, in this case, a lot more. There are a couple of things that we need to add to this. Now, that $275 is a very conservative scenario. It assumes that we have 5% interest rate. We may be able to better. It assumes that no additional income is coming in to offset this cost. But our elected officials are working on additional income, including grants. And finally, it assumes that the total funded price for the project will be spent. We've learned from our last couple of capital projects that this too is not necessarily true. In fact, tonight, you voted on cooping funds from the last two capital projects. So with good management and some luck, these projects can come in on or under budget. Finally, there is another issue that I think has not been taken into account, and that is that the financing for having a temporary Town Hall in Byfield would fund, would finance in between $4.3 and $4.5 million. That's money you're spending and not getting anything back on. In addition, the savings in putting these operations together nets about a three-quarter of a million dollar bump. That's how much we could finance with those savings. So if you look at what we So if you look at what we saved by this project, we're saving in between five point two and five point three billion dollars. So, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back to the moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Justerson. Call now on the Chief of Police, Mike Riley, to explain how the design suits the police.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm gonna apologize right off the bat, because my wife tells me when I speak, I always look intense and me. I am not mad, I'm not angry, so get that right out of your head right now. First thing I wanna do is thank each and every one of you for coming out, whether you agree with this project or you don't, it's pretty universal that the, this universal agreement that the police department is a priority, and for that, I thank each and every one of you. I'm gonna answer some questions right off the bat, so, and I've heard them all week, so I just wanna get everything out there. First and foremost, yes, the footprint in the program that has been presented ticks all the boxes and suits the needs of the police department. I'm very pleased with it, as somebody that's worked in this town for thirty years, and somebody that knows intimately the ins and outs of what the Newbury Police Department needs, this design does suit all our needs. It's minimal, being greedy, I always want more, but being responsible, we pared it down as far as we could, without me saying enough. So it does suit the needs. Second question is, do you want a standalone building, or do you want, do you mind town hall being above you? Look, you build us a police station that suits my needs, you can put a Pizza Hut above us, I couldn't care less, okay? The design that Jeff came up with, and the architect and the OPM came up with, I think is fantastic. I think the conceptual drawing is beautiful, I think it fits in with the neighborhood. We've operated for thirty years, I've been here, with town hall above us, and it hasn't been a major detriment, aside from them hearing every conversation we have, but with building codes, I think we're all set. It does give the police a separate entrance, provides privacy for people coming into the station, provides privacy for people being detained by the police department, and as the police chief, my two main responsibilities are to provide the town of Newbury with excellent police services, which I hope I do, and I hope, I truly believe the men and women of the Newbury Police Department do their best to give you excellent police services. My other responsibility as the Chief Administrator of the department is for the safety and well-being of the people that work for us. And this, the current configuration we're in now, and I've heard a lot of, you guys are happy where you are now. I'm happier, because my sergeant over there doesn't have conjunctivitis six months of the year, from being down in that basement, so she's upstairs and she hasn't had to go see the doctor once, I'm very happy about that. But as far as the facility we're in being a functioning, efficient police station, it's far from it. So, yes, we are happier, and I'm thrilled that we're out of the basement, but for it to be an efficient, functioning police station, it is not the right setup, and it is just completely inadequate. So, this design provides for the safety of the officers as well. And as a department head, another one of my major responsibilities is to look out for the fiscal interest and to use taxpayer money as wisely as possible. Listen, I've been doing this, and I've been on iterations of building committees and site selection committees since two thousand and twelve. I've heard it all, I've seen it all, this works. It's a good design, it provides long-term savings for the town, and I can't say enough good things about it, and I'm very confident that the Newbury Police Department will thrive in this building, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll open the floor up to the audience. Does anyone wish to be heard on the project, on the motion?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Justerson? To speak on one of the things that was mentioned earlier about cost reduction, we've been working on that considerably. The two seventy-five, as was mentioned, is a conservative number. We're hoping that if we approve this plan tonight, once this building is built, we can take the money that has currently been allocated for rent over on Kentway, and put that money to paying down the debt, which would reduce the debt service for residents, that in addition to the money that the governors has committed to giving to us, to around a hundred and ninety-five dollars a year for the average household. That is sixty dollars more than our current debt service for the six point five million dollars. So what that means is that for sixty dollars more a year per household, we can fix two program needs for the town, and have it all settled and squared away, as opposed to letting it draw out for an extended period of time. Each time we delay a decision, it costs us about half a million dollars. Six months is half a million dollars, a year's a million, it just gets more expensive. So for sixty bucks, we can get it done, and I think we should do it now.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing no one? Well, then come to the microphone.
I guess I have a question about what the...
We can adjust the...
Terry Luteris, forty-five Northern Boulevard. What is the expected date under this budget for completion and having it all done?
So the assumption is that should the project proceed with the vote later on in November, we would get right to work, the approximately six months of design work, approximately two months of bidding the project, oh, thank you, approximately two months of bidding the project out to contractors, and then twelve to fourteen months, maybe fifteen months of construction. So, what does that equal, about twenty-two, almost two years, when the doors would open for the project?
Thank you.
Sir? Mike Doyle sits Morgan Avenue. I'd like to make a motion that when we vote on this tonight, we make a paper ballot?
Second.
Paper ballot vote. Before we go to a paper ballot, I want to see where we get on the less time-consuming ways of asserting the will of the meeting. Oh, yeah, Joe Story, thirty-two Newbury Neck Road. Number one, I'd like to go on record that I'm in favor of standalone projects, okay? And I have a question for the designers. Is it common to combine a town hall with a police station? If you drive around, you see several projects going, that are public safety, that are police and fire, and it seems like we're a little bit out, and it looks like the site is too congested for the two projects to be on that footprint.
My experience has been that you could combine many different types of buildings together. There are certain building types that I would not combine together, I would not classify a town hall and a police station in that category. They're both public buildings, serving the public, in a sense, from a police department perspective, they are in fact always trying to get the public to be more welcome in their buildings, so in that sense, it's actually a good pairing. There's certainly private aspects and secure aspects of a police station that you don't want to be out in the public and shared, but the design of this building currently anticipates that, and it actually helps by pushing some of the police station spaces into that lower level, embedded into the ground a little bit, in the backsides of the building, so you don't see it. In fact, you know, the evidence rooms, detention areas, things like that, are hidden deeper into the building, so in fact, those aren't suffering at all from a combined building. And in many communities where there is a need to save money, to combine space, as you pointed out, with police and fire stations, it's a common tool to combine. And though it's not done all over the place, there's certainly fewer of them, there are examples of towns that have done that, I can think of some in rural, more rural parts of Maine and New Hampshire where that's not uncommon, many parts of Massachusetts do not have this, but it's certainly not an inconceivable thing.
Okay. And I got a question on the amount of money it's gonna cost...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to add one thing to that. At my firm, we have done it in several towns already, in the town of Randolph, we put an addition onto the police station that is attached to the town hall, in the town of Chelmsford, Massachusetts, we built a fire station connected directly into the town hall as well. It is a common practice, and we're seeing more, only because it's a cost savings. But yes, we take into account all the security issues that come before us, and we've talked it all around, related with the chief, to figure out what would best serve his needs, as well as what would serve the best for the town hall, to keep the two facilities separate but secure at the same time.
Okay. The other question I have is, to the Finance Committee, we talked about the amount of money it's gonna cost per household, all right? Is that gonna be an increase on what we have now, or is that gonna take into effect the debt exclusion we're now paying off?
That is the increase, good question, it is the increase that is associated with this debt. When we pay debt off, we have a reduction, as you know, in the total debt. And so, we have a slide up here that showed that the debt service was in fact twice as high as what it's going to be going forward for this project.
All right, so this will be, whatever amount of money it was, there's a couple figures thrown out there, and this will be the amount after we do the debt exclusion, or if we didn't? What I'm saying is, if a tax rate is a hundred dollars, and of that hundred dollars, ten dollars goes into paying off the debt exclusion, and we're saying this is gonna cost ten dollars more, okay, is it gonna remain level, or is it gonna go up there?
We have a reducing debt load right now.
So you've taken that...
Okay, so we're taking that down?
Yeah.
The two hundred and seventy-five dollars is only this debt, okay? So what you're seeing on your tax bill is going down, this is gonna bump it back up, is it gonna go the whole two hundred and seventy-five? No, because you're coming down with some other monies.
Okay, yeah, because there's a lot of the debt exclusion that should be, we're getting pretty damn close to paying off, right?
That is correct. So we are going to be in a debt area that's only half what we were several years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Story, and all who answered the questions, ma'am.
Good evening. Claire Dix, one ninety-two High Road, and I'd like to read a statement. I've been a resident for Newbury for nine and a half years, which is far less than many of you here this evening, and so it has been important to me to study really well the Article VII so that I can cast a responsible vote. What drew us to this area was not only the beauty of the town and the environment, but also the fiscal conservatism that the townspeople have shown in their town investments over the years. It seems that they have, in general, used their money wisely, and I like that. Therefore, in two thousand and sixteen, I voted to spend six point five million dollars to build a standalone police station, along with renovating the town hall. I thought that that was the end of the voting and the beginning of the project. I was dismayed, undoubtedly, like other townspeople, when no action was taken on the vote. So now we are being asked to vote again, but I will remain an optimist. I have seen hard workers and extremely thoughtful workers on both sides of the issue. I attended the last three early Friday morning meetings of the Building Committee, I have attended other building forums, I've read the letters to the editor on both sides, and I've heard extremely thoughtful conversations. I do commend the Building Committee for its hard and very time-consuming work. I have heard equally thoughtful and reasonable comments and concerns from the concerned Newbury taxpayers, who have a thoughtful, practical, and vigilant approach to spending the taxpayers' hard-earned money, while keeping in mind the composition of the present town population, as well as long-range financial planning, which must happen in order to withstand any further debt exclusion overrides. So rhetorical question, how will the Selectmen prioritize additional finances which will be needed to maintain the town in a variety of areas in the future? I feel strongly that the police should have their own building, and that it should be constructed on Morgan Avenue in the area which was bought for the purpose beyond the fire station. I believe that the proposed building of two stories, which would house both the town hall and the police together, would be too large for the lot. It would not give the police the recognition, the privacy, the prominence, and direct access that they deserve and need in this town. We need to attract the best police officers possible and house them in more than just adequate or minimal conditions. In this day and age, public safety is of utmost importance, we can say this in spite of the fact that Newbury is a quiet town. The current police station, if renovated for housing the town hall again, would not be overly costly to heat and to maintain. After all, unlike a police station which is open twenty-four seven, it is only open four days a week. It could be maintained cost-wise, because it is a relatively small building. It would, though, be very costly to spend the next couple of years disrupting both police and town hall affairs during the construction, along with having to pay rent elsewhere for both entities. So if we build the police station as a standalone on Morgan Avenue, there will be little disruption, and once the station is complete and the police have moved into a new building, renovation can begin on the town hall, and business can be back to usual. I urge the voters to vote no on Article VII, even if we need to go back to the drawing board for some additional funds because of the cost increases during the past two years.
You're cutting the line.
Hi, Sean Julie, twenty Boston Road. I'm a little out of hearing, so. I thought what I read was that we went from six point five million to fourteen million, and then back to twelve, is that correct?
Yes.
In the private sector, we never would've got to twelve, because one of them might go after it went to fourteen, but the basic reality, right? The firm you hired, Vertex or something, they're out of Waymouth, correct? They're at... The contractor, the project manager they hired originally, Vertex, they're at Waymouth, correct?
Yes.
You guys do basically worldwide projects, hospitals, Buffalo, oil refining remediation for risk, St. Corrin, Jack in the Box looking...
Let's get the answer first, and then...
Okay.
We're a construction management firm at a Waymouth, we're not constructors.
Okay, well, let's pause it, you list on your website.
We're project managers. Believe me, when I tell you there's several other firms out there called Vertex, we're the Vertex company.
Well, it says Vertex at a Waymouth, and it's on your website, all these projects. So, at any rate, whether they're yours or not, it seems pretty to handle it if they are. Why would we hire someone that is that diverse, why wouldn't we go local? That would be my question. It seems like this is one of the largest projects the town's ever gonna do, and it's been fumbled all the way along. So if a vote was based on six point five million, why wouldn't we have a vote based on twelve million? It seems misleading that that vote would even stand.
Okay. We had a selection process, it's on the record, it was long and exhaustive, we had a number of very good candidates, none of them were firms from Newbury. To select an OPM, we had to create a... To select an OPM, we had to create a matrix that we used. The scores for all of those are still on record, and you can see the companies that we looked at. It was an exhaustive process, and Vertex was the best company for the job. As far as firing someone because they didn't meet an unrealistic budget, I don't see why you would do that. The program needs are the program needs. That's what we have asked him to do. We said, solve our program needs in this space. That's what he did, came back with fourteen million. We said that was too much. How can we reduce it? That's how we got to where we are now.
Eric, did you want to be...
I'm with Dana, okay? Response is right on. Okay, ma'am?
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street, Byfield. This is just a statement. I'd like to start by saying that I do believe that we do need a proper police station in the town of Newbury. It's long overdue. The discussion of the police station was started many years ago, and on January 31st, 2017, the taxpayers of Newbury cast their vote for a standalone police station to be built on the purchase, on the lot purchased on Morgan Avenue, for the space needed for a new police station. This lot is to the right of the Newbury Fire Station. Taxpayers voted by a two-thirds majority to appropriate a six point five million dollar budget to cover the cost of a standalone police station and to renovate what was the town hall, now police station. Since January 2017, many things have been revisited. Many times, the taxpayers have been blamed for not letting the town of Newbury move forward, but tonight, that is not the case. I believe the Board of Selectment and Town Administrator Municipal Building Committee have all agreed they didn't do their homework the last time we voted, like, and would like to have another go around, added for almost double what the taxpayers voted on and approved. I say nearly two years have been squandered. Today, we could have been virtually announcing a ribbit-cutting date for the new police station and started renovation on town hall, and could move forward on new business. How many plans and project concepts has the town of Newbury already invested time and money into? All of us here in the audience tonight don't know that answer. Yes, costs are rising, but that is something that happens daily for everything, including our taxes. We are all here for the same reason, which is what is best for our town, but with fiscal responsibility to all the town of Newbury citizens. So therefore, I ask that you vote no on Article VII tonight. If the town of Newbury were to build a standalone police station of eight thousand square feet, at a square-footage cost of five hundred and fifty per square foot, the cost would be four point four million. This eight thousand does not include the eleven hundred square feet additional space requested to be used for multiple purposes. By adding the eleven hundred square feet, it would bring the cost of the project up to just a little over five million. The five hundred and fifty cost per square foot is accounting for potential cost increases. At six point five million, it would leave almost one point five million to renovate the town hall.
Ma'am, I want to rush you along, simply because we... Now, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Your remarks are addressed to a project that is not before this meeting. We have a project that is before the meeting, and you've already announced that you will vote no on that project. And that, I don't want to get into the subject of what an alternate project should look like. So please, please conclude your remarks. Please conclude your remarks, why within another thirty seconds.
Although the town of Newbury has housed both the town hall and police department under one roof for many years, and even though there are other places that are doing it, but it's not the norm here in Massachusetts, do we as citizens really feel it would be best for safety of those doing business in the town hall? Wouldn't we be keeping our citizens safer if we kept the police station and the town hall separate? And do we want to displace our police department again? We've all received good information, there will be more big projects in the future of the town of Newbury, where we'll be asked to make the hard choices. The six and a half million dollar budget will allow us in the future to address the next big issues without feeling financially burdened. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I guess you know who I am. And I am gonna keep this very short, because I feel that about ninety-nine point nine percent of the people that are here tonight know how they're gonna vote. I'm not gonna sw... I'm not, yeah, there we go. I'm not gonna swing any votes, but I just want you to know, this is a bad plan. They're placing a behemoth of a building on a postage-stamped lot. The parking is, most of the parking is remote, this is not very good. Most of the parking is remote. It's in the back, where the police station should be built. There's no room for decent landscaping. It's gonna look like heck, and the price is too high. And guess what? The police are gonna be in the basement, where they were before. So I would say, vote no.
Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights. I have a lot of things I could say. I've been to a lot of these meetings, I've gone through all the iterations. My hat's off to Eric for his work over the last several years that he's put into this, and he's seen it all. What dismays me a little bit is a lot of people wanna sit in their home office or on their couch, and they wanna be amateur OPMs, they wanna be amateur architects, they wanna be amateur budget planners. This is a big project. I hire professionals to do things I can't do, from estate planning to installing septics, to my taxes, and I want to rely on a professional to do a job like this. We finally have the OPM and the architect on board. We can see what they're trying to do. I agree with many who said that we can't just put a budget number out there and hope for the best. That is not the way you do things. That may be how a car salesman sells you a car, how much can you afford, but that's really not how to do a project like this. So I applaud the professionals, and if I were to turn to anyone in this room to ask, is this a good plan for the town of Newbury and fiscally responsible? I would ask Eric Zvon that question, because he's gone through every iteration. My final comment is, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, when people in this town decided they needed to build Newbury Elementary, or they had to build the original town hall, or all the infrastructure that had to be built, they weren't thinking selfishly about, what's this gonna impact me short-term? We're making an investment in the future of Newbury. It's necessary, it's timely, they've come to a conclusion that makes sense to me, because I rely on the professionals that have come up with it. Two comments about the newspaper, it was yesterday's paper, Mr. Glickman and Selectman Jasterson had two very good columns that I think summed up where we're at, and I encourage people to read it, but they can't read it till after they vote tonight. So I urge everyone to vote yes, and let's get the project moving. Thank you.
Hello, Brett Davis, 59 Main Street, Byfield.
Can you hear me now? I had some stuff to say, but I realized it's been kinda put in a box, so. We're talking about the present project, I don't know why. Can you hear me now? You know, I wanna welcome the kids from the governor's academy. Anybody here from another country? So, this is supposed to be one man, one vote. You know, I have voted six times on this project, and I wanna know if my vote is going to count this time. I wanna know if this project is voted down, if it'll be the end of it. Because it's been several years, several ideas. We can't even talk about what we want, we can only talk about the pending project. So I'm just asking, will this be the last special town meeting if this fails? Why wouldn't it be? We already have six point five million dollars, we already have the land.
I'll ask the selectmen if they want to answer the question.
The six point five project, when we couldn't get design money approved at a town meeting, that forced us to go into the process backwards. So we had to get farther down the road to realize, six and a half wasn't gonna do it. And to me, personally, to proceed with the budget and use tax money to build a project that's gonna be inadequate right out of the gate, I tried to learn a lesson from our neighbors in Raleigh. They're building two police stations in twenty years, because they did the bare minimum, off-alone approach, and they quickly outgrew it with trailers and things of the sort. The time to act is now. All through this process, even when we started right at the very beginning, people were telling me, the savings in combining, the savings in combining. You know, as Jeff said, it was a very turbulent political time, so we looked for any way to make a compromise to make this go forward, because time's money. And, I mean, I know myself, I can't revert now, I see the savings in a combined building, and this is getting more and more expensive by the day. The more we delay, the more we cost ourselves. The site that's laid out allows us great flexibility for the future. There's plenty of parking. All those concerns, I think, are moot. The building, it's a very tasteful rendition. I mean, I don't, the way we are, and, I mean, we've lost money by delaying and going into this process backwards, and I don't blame anyone, it's been tough for everyone, it's a huge investment.
I really don't know where you're going with this. I'm asking a simple question. Does my vote count?
Your vote. Your vote counts every time. You ask me a question about how I'm feeling, and I feel this is the way to go, and I, it would be hard for me to let it go.
What's the size of the new police station?
The complete building size is eighteen thousand square...
What is the size of the police station?
Mr. Shaw, do you have an exact square footage of the police station as proposed?
The police station is, the actual square footage of just police-only spaces is about eighty-two hundred square feet, then there is approximately two thousand square feet of shared space. So, put it in different terms, if you were to build this by itself, on its own piece of land, as a separate building, you'd need to build about a ten thousand square foot building.
So can I, this is part of the project, isn't the slide you've shown all a part of the project? Or do we just have to go with the final pick? Is that how it works?
No, the slide I showed, the four concepts that were produced, I was trying to give everybody understanding of the history, so it was iterations, start at the beginning, finish at the end. The proposed option, the one that's in the handout, is the only proposal before you.
On this final project, that you've just put in front of the people, the joint buildings, or however it is, how long have you worked on that particular one project?
That's impossible to answer, because it's a combination of all the work that was done throughout the entire study. We did the space needs study from the beginning, which enabled us to be able to make decisions about what can be combined, what has to be the minimum sizes for each bit of space, and what is the minimum total program for each apartment.
So I'm just gonna make one last statement, and then I will sit down, okay? If this project passes, then it's a go. If this project does not pass, you really should take into consideration the voters that are voting to stop. Thank you.
Jim Moran, 104 Elm Street. Mr. Moran is moving to amend Article VII to substitute for the project contemplated by it. A project costing sixty-five, sixty million five hundred thousand dollars to equip a standalone police station to be located on parcel two map UO6, and for the payment of all costs incidental thereto. That's the motion, do I hear a second? The motion is made and seconded.
Mr. Moran, did I address the audience on this issue? What I'm proposing is a nine thousand square foot police station for six point five million dollars. The reasoning I'm presenting this motion is three-fold. It provides an option for the voters here tonight, obviously what I'm proposing versus what the town is proposing. It defines the area of the police station at nine thousand square feet. I know some people just don't have a comprehension of area. The auditorium we're sitting in here tonight is about eighty-two hundred square feet. So if you could imagine a police station even bigger than the floor space you're sitting on, it would appear to me that that would be more than adequate space for the police The cost of six point five million dollars is arrived at by using the area, and it's in line with the format that the town's been using for the past several months. That includes the cost of the police station, four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for nine thousand square feet, the design and the OPM cost, which are identical to what the town is carrying in their budget, soils and concrete testing, the soils the town does not carry in their budget, geotechnical engineering, I'm carrying, which the town is not carrying in their budget, and also network, security furnishings, and bid-moving and utility costs, and a subdonal that's marked up another ten percent, and the number comes just under four point, five million dollars. This plan would allow the town to move ahead in a focused manner, prepare designs and getting documents for construction for summer and the fall of 2019. Police could move into the new police station partially next year. In parallel to this effort, the town could prepare for the 2019 annual town meeting with plans for the work for the town hall, and be prepared for construction later in 2019, and move into the town hall shortly after the police move into the new facility. Thank you.
So while the, while the motion to amend is in proper form, there's nothing wrong with the motion itself. Technically, it won't allow the town to appropriate money, and it, neither does it add for a debt exclusion, so it authorizes the town to borrow money, it doesn't authorize the town to appropriate money, and there's no language in here for a debt exclusion either. So while technically it's a proper amendment, it actually does not get the town to the point that it actually can get money to use it for the nine thousand square foot police The borrowing that was approved previously was for a police station and a town hall. The borrowing that was approved previously was for a police station and a town hall. I'm informed by the accountant and the town administrator that it was for both.
One thing, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak to, to the fact that, folks, this is a pretty high bar tonight. It's 2/3. It certainly gives everyone in this room the ability to exercise their free will. And 2/3 is a very high bar. It would be a shame to subvert the direction of this motion with something like trying to change it in midstream. 2/3, 2/3, guys, is a pretty high bar. I mean, that's what it needs to pass tonight.
Okay, Mr. Sir, you may.
I need to speak on both.
Yes. You can speak on both. I think we've got alternate proposals before us.
Thank you. Mark Kleppen, 20th Avenue Drive. Dale and McDale Williams, a few months ago, they had points that I want to reinforce, and that is regardless of the pressures and the inconveniences and the confusion and the frustration that we all feel here and have felt for many years, you pay the experts to give you the right guidance, and I think we've done that. I find it interesting that a number of people who come to the microphone talk about the necessity of separating the town hall and the police department in new facilities when in fact for, help me with this, 40, 50, 100 years, town hall and the police department were one and the same.
No, they haven't been.
For many, many years, they've been the same. I've been in this town 42 years. For many years, they were the same. They were one and the same, same building, and it was decrepit conditions. No one was concerned then about separating police and town hall. So, the fact that they're talking about it now, I think, is convenient the best. So, I have a choice to make as a taxpayer on the border, and I choose to believe the people who have invested years in these projects. They have no vested interest themselves. They have no financial interest themselves. They're reduced in doing the best job for the taxpayers of the town and the community, including me. So, I believe Mike Riley when he says that you can't build a police station that we need for $6.5 million. I choose to believe Tracy Blaze and her administration, who by the way have got this town in the best fiscal position I've seen in the 42 years I'm in this town, by a long shot. So, when Tracy and her group of fabulous managers who do our bidding every day tell us that they can't live in that renovated and/or expanded town hall, I choose to believe them, not, as Dale said, people who are doing their work in their living rooms. And so, the combination of the PD and town administration telling us what their needs are, in combination with what Jeff and the people at contacts and the OPM are telling us, it seems like it's a pretty simple solution to me. Damon talked about the fact that we can mitigate some of these costs through grants, through government work, through, as Masha was talking about, through debt exclusion, excuse me, through debt reduction and other means. And so, even if that $60 becomes $100, you know, or $200, whatever it may be, to me, that's money well spent when you consider the fact that in order to do this piecemeal, you know, to suggest that we can take this old town hall that has many, many issues that probably haven't even been discovered yet and renovate that, retrofit that, expand that to make it fully functional, to me is crazy. I just don't think it could be done. And so, to vote just on a police station now and say, "Let's kick the other stuff down the road for another two or three years," is just fiscally irresponsible. I wouldn't want to be part of any town that does that. Thank you.
No, no. No, don't cut the line. Ma'am, do you want to speak?
Susan Ricker from 17 Knott Hill in Byfield. And I would, I don't know if this is even a way to ask this, I would like to, as a member of the audience, ask the gentleman who moved to amend the article if he could just help us all out and just withdraw that. It would just be nice to keep it simple. He made his point. Can we just vote on the regular thing? And if he could just help us withdraw the.
Okay, Mr. Moran, do you want to respond?
I'm looking for some clarity. Are you turning down my motion? And if so, what I'd like to do is further amend it.
No, no. She, okay, she has not turned down your motion. She said it's a proper motion that can be voted on. Her point is it just doesn't do the things that have to be done to enable the project.
Sure. If I further amended to the last sentence in what the town has written in the article, will that cover the debt? I believe the last sentence reads, "I'd like the further amendment to determine whether the amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise ought to be taken from other action relative thereto." Now, does that cover? Where does the article here say debt exclusion?
You're reading the article as opposed to the motion. You'll notice the motion that was read by the selectman earlier was very detailed. It specifically said appropriate and pay for the appropriation by borrowing under a particular statute, and then it required the borrowing to be paid pursuant to a debt exclusion in the appropriate citation. Your article is in appropriate form. It just doesn't, it won't allow the town to do what you want it to do, if not.
So, I understand clearly what I'm reading in Article 7 is not the total article. That was amended by the town earlier in there.
Well, you, okay.
You are reading the article, which was an appropriate article in the warrant. The motion is more specific. And the motion that, which has also been handed out, the motion carries the language that's required under the statute.
Could I introduce that language into my motion?
Well, I think you could. Motions are supposed to be presented in written form. You could amend this thing from now till doomsday, but we're voting on the motion as it's, as you submit, and it's eligible for a vote unless, as the lady suggested, you wish to withdraw it. Okay, you do not wish to withdraw it. Then the question comes before the meeting on whether to amend the motion to read to see if the town will borrow a sum of money in the amount not to exceed $6,500,000 to construct originally equipped 9,000-square-foot standalone police station to be located, and so on. You get the gist of it. The, I would ask all those in favor of amending the main article. The main article now is the one that calls for you to approve the project, which was submitted by the architects and by the selectmen. And the question is before you, is whether we substitute for that project this language, which is submitted as a motion to amend, takes away everything in the original and does substitutes for this language.
What point of order? Is that 2/3 or majority?
No, it's a majority. Okay? All those in favor? Okay, now we need, first of all, I want to hear it on a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All those against the amendment say nay.
Nay.
The nays overwhelmingly evident. We come now to the, to the main motion, and I would ask, I think, ma'am, we've, it's really late. I don't want to keep this discussion going. This, we, we're voting on the main article now. The article that's contemplated, the motion of Mr. Jespersen, that is for the construction of the $12 million combined facility. On the main?
On the main.
On the main motion? Okay, go ahead. Speak up, speak up. First, identify your name and address.
The NTS 9 Mall Lane. So, two things. The original, back in 2015, was a budget for police station and fire department combined and renovation to the town hall. Correct? Is that right? The original was public safety?
Yes, the first proposal which we brought before the meeting to get designs funds for was for combined police, fire, and renovations to town hall. That was rejected.
Right. So, do we think that the fire station is in good shape, and a few years down the road, we're not going to have to renovate that? Because originally, we're going to combine the two. Why are we not using the fire department as part of that renovation? If it was necessary before?
Okay, Mr. Spun.
Yes, the original proposal before I had started was a public safety complex, a police and fire. At that time, they had two private fire companies in town, and so the fire issue of the town building a building for a private fire company was a nonstarter for a lot of people. They then moved to say that, yes, the police and the fire and the town hall all need new facilities. And if we don't solve them now, we'll solve them five years, 10 years, but they all need, they all need something.
So, then right now, we're just doing the police and the town hall. So, according to that, our fire department's going to need some changes too. Is that correct? So, are we looking at that? And why are we looking at it now when we're looking at building this? As lots of other towns have public safety together in town.
Okay. Is anyone prepared to answer the question?
It's going to be a future cost.
Why we're not addressing the fire department needs in this motion?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to jump in and say that the town has a capital plan. We have a capital planning committee that looks at all the needs of our capital improvements. The police station was identified back in 2006, I think, or 2002. Currently, the town has the most pressing need is we do not have a police station. I agree. And we do not have a town hall. So, as an elected board of selectmen member for this town, we here all have to look at how to solve the most needs of the town at the least financial impact that uses the taxpayer money most efficiently. We've looked at projects over and over again. This project effectively kills two birds with one stone. If we do go and build a standalone police station, which I am not in favor for, the town is going to eventually have to come back, or the board of selectmen, I may, we may, none of us may be on here. Eventually, we're going to have to, eventually, we're going to have to address the needs of the town hall. The fire department also has a need. The fire department on Morgan Ave, their building, their building is too small to fit the fire trucks today. They have a wall that is collapsing, but we can make do with that for now. Eventually, that's going to have to get addressed as well. But currently, right now, I think we need to just stick with the fact that before us, we've looked at a combined police station, town hall, similar to what we've had for many years, and move the town forward.
Okay, so I voted yes all the time for this because I think it's so important, and I see it absolutely need that police station. But if we're kicking the can down the road for the fire department, it might make sense now to do it together. We're going to have another huge layout. You see it. You're already telling me that it's coming. I'd like to prepare for that. And if for some reason now if we do it, it might make more sense, I'd like us to consider that. Because originally, that was in this plan. Okay, $6.5 million was off, but $14 million is a huge.
I think Eric can answer that.
Thank you, ma'am. We understand your point, but we're getting into a new area, opening up the needs of the fire department.
All buildings are going to be renovated.
You've made your point, and maybe we should have envisioned a bigger project to include the fire department also.
We should. We might need to rush into this and do a quick vote.
But we understand the point. Thank you. Thank you. Eric?
Yes, work has been done on the fire station in terms of a program that was equal to the program that was done for the town hall and equal done for the police station. The original project that the architect started on was standalone police station, and what it took into account in terms of a master plan was to include spaces that could be duplicated by the fire department in the future. That project for that police station grew in size because of those spaces. We didn't think that anybody, certainly you were not going to go along with buying future spaces if you can't understand to solve the current needs now. So, that was dropped in the best effort to combine program for the biggest savings is the direction we've taken, or what we were asked to take.
Okay. Sir, do you have a new point to make? I'm going to give you 30 seconds.
Sorry. Avery Woodworth, Downhill Road, Byfield. Just a quick question. The police have to move, go somewhere. I assume that's what the $750,000 is for them to live somewhere else during this project. Was it looked at using the parking lot to build this project on that back lot that we now own? I know that it would move the parking out front later on. Maybe it's not aesthetically as pleasing, but it saves $750,000, and nobody has to move. Just a question. Thank you.
I think we can move to, I'd rather not get into this subject. It's a different subject. It's a different plan from the plan before us. So, we're voting now on the main motion. The motion is to authorize the plan that's been described to you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
I'm going to have to take a standing vote. Okay? So, I would ask the counters to come forward. And...
Everyone, whoever is standing in the back, you need to find a seat and be seated so that you can be counted. There are seats on this side up front, and there are seats on that side, and there are seats back here, but you won't be counted unless you're seated.
Okay, so... Okay, when the counters come to your area, rise. It's traditional for the first, say, four rows. If there are ayes, the ayes votes in those rows, rise. When the counter counts your vote, he will motion you down and count the row behind you. Then motion it down, count the row behind that. Okay? So, proceed. All those in favor of the project, vote aye. Rise, rise.
Susan, are you risen? Sue, are you risen? Thank you.
Okay, the vote was 195 in favor, and 159 nays. That is not, does not meet the two-thirds requirement, and the motion under Article 7 goes down. Now, we don't all rush to the door, we have several more articles to get through, we want to get through them tonight. I move that the town vote to amend chapters 22 and 24 of the general bylaws by deleting chapters 22 and 24 in their entirety, and replacing chapter 22 with a personnel bylaw as printed in this Article 9 of this warrant. Okay? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. I believe I'm correct in saying that this is largely technical lawyer-type changes, we're changing some names in agencies, personnel board becomes the something or other, or human resources.
Mr. Moderator, you're absolutely right, this is just, as I understand it, cleaning language, like the cleaning does so, cleaning board does so often with their bylaws, it's just evening up things and making them more workable.
Okay, no fiscal impact. Anyone wish to be heard? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes, the ayes have it. Article 9.
I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court to amend chapter 460 of the Acts of 2008, an act establishing a selectmen administrator form of government for the town, and set forth an Article 9 of the warrant, except remove the health agent and the health inspector from the list in section 13B.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, Bud Kelly, 24 School Street, Byfield, and I, in fairness, I'm the chairman of your board of assessors. An elected position that I've had for 20 years. In this article is also the removal of two positions in town hall which are currently an elected position, which are being shifted by this motion to an appointed position. Democracy is the way we live, and our voice in democracy is how we vote. If we take these two positions and put them to appointed, we have no say and no vote on those two roles that are very, very important in our community. So I urge you to vote no on this, or simply perhaps we amend it, so that we remove those two positions from the appointed status.
Mr. Kelly, just as a point of information, the existing, the incumbents in those positions, town clerk and constable, are grandfathered, the...
I understand that, I'm not talking about just me and my generation, I'm talking for years to come.
Okay. I take it that's a motion to amend, to exclude those two positions?
If that makes it the easiest way to let the rest of this motion go, that's fine with me, I'd just like to remove those two positions, and if I need to word it in a different way, or write it out.
Is the, would the amendment be acceptable to you?
Yes.
Yeah, looking, okay. Was it J.R. Colby who made the motion, correct? Who was it, Jeff made the motion?
I mean...
Jeff, yeah. Is the motion acceptable, is the amendment acceptable to you? Okay. Okay, so, the...
And you have to go to the amendment first, then...
Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor to amend the language by deleting from it the town clerk and the constables. Correct?
If I may speak to that, I would actually recommend that all these bullet points remain as they are, and not subject to the appointment of a town administrator. So in that sense, that's a friendly amendment to what Mr. Kelly suggested, to make all of these bulleted positions.
I would need to know, many of those are already appointed, so are the others that are all appointed, are the only ones that are not appointed, the town clerk and the constable, my... So it turns out, the town clerk and these constables are the only two that are currently an elected position which would be switched, so all of the other ones would remain as they are, as appointed positions. I'm only addressing the town clerk and constable, because those are the only two on the list that currently are in elected position. So that's what the amendment that's been handed to me, written by town consul, motion to amend Article 9 by removing the town clerk and constable from section 13.
Okay, so that, that has been proposed as an amendment to the article, and Mr. Colby, who made the motion under the article, exceeds to that change. Correct? So, everyone is in favor of it, except we haven't heard from you. So, all those in favor of the amendment, no, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it. Now, we come to a vote on the main motion, and Mr. Mangin is first, and then you.
Steve Mangin, 14th Street, Homile, Newbury. I support the motion as amended, and thank you.
Good, thank you, sir. Ma'am?
So this is on the main article?
Right, it's on the main article.
I am a human resources professional, and lead a very big task for a non-paid person to do. Huge, to set the salary, benefits, all these, and then it says, see the human resources award on authorized employee professional consultants, maybe, what's that?
That's the prior article.
Oh, is it? Are we on the...
Yeah, yeah.
Article eight?
No, we're on Article 9.
Sing it?
Article 9.
We just, I just wish to go to eight?
We did.
Gee.
Okay, so let's, this is the last article on the warrant, if we vote on it, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to remove Article 7 for consideration.
Article, okay. What do I do there?
I want to move Article 7 again.
The motion, the motion requires a second. Will someone second the motion? Okay. Wait a minute. This is, this is the first time I've ever had to rule a great number of people out of order. Please just go with the, a motion has been made to reconsider the vote on Article 7. And it's been seconded. Now...
Everybody, this man, every single one, all of this man is qualified, 20% of the people left, no one...
Well, that's their problem. That's their problem.
Okay. Okay, so it's debatable?
No, vote.
Yep, you may.
Fred Bashaw, 120 Central Street. I consider myself an average guy in town. I consider myself an average guy in town. I do not page you to report daily news. I knew nothing of this meeting about to happen, but someone sent me a little thing in my mail. So to everyone in this board, in your room, fancy architects and everything else, this was not promoted well to the town.
Oh, no, give me a break.
We weren't informed. Unless you get to report news, or you come to the town meetings, you don't know about this. So for everyone that's sitting up here, trying to get this passed, good luck. You're looking at a town that won appropriate two and a half for the school, now you want to spend 14, 12 million dollars for a police department? You did not promote this program correctly to the town.
You're on edge.
A lot of people up here, just like me, got that little thing in the mail, showed up tonight. Very disappointing. You have to promote this to everyone in the town, not just show up tonight and vote. I hope you do it better the next time.
49 Pearson Drive, Byfield. The goal, a few people, after 20% of the auditorium left, is to have them out to having an election, and then after the votes are counted, have an exclusion an hour and a half after the final vote is taken to do it again because you didn't like the turnout. If you want to do it again, have another, you cannot do that. It's unfair, undemocratic, and goes, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's unfair, undemocratic, and goes against everything that this town is for, democratic process.
Having heard the resounding disapproval of this idea, my hope was to save the town half a million dollars by getting this approved now. We cannot not solve the program needs of the town, so we will be back in six months, or after the November election, to try and solve this later. It was my hope, it, Fred, I'm talking, you do not have the floor, let me finish. Having heard the resounding disagreement from my fellow citizens, I would like to remove my motion from the floor.
In defense, there is nothing improper, it's entirely within the rules, to make a motion to reconsider. So, nothing wrong was done. And it's, so now, we've, we're back to square one, I think, on the whole police station, town hall project, and we've got, the problems are not gone, but we're back to square one on a solution. So, thank you for coming to town.
Mr. Moderator, people should remember that this is the town meeting, and I understand what Damon's concerned, but the ballot is still ahead. So you will be voting on this at the ballots, at the election.
One more thing, yes, this is going to, it's on the ballot, I think it's question four, on the ballot. I said it once, and I'm going to say it again, we still have a need. We need to build a police department, and we need to build a town hall. So, we will be coming, I know Fred had asked earlier, are we going to go away with this? We're not going to go away, we're going to continue to come back, because we have to solve those needs.
Remember, this is a two-step project. We need the two-thirds vote of the town meeting, but we also need the approval on the ballot, which won the last time. Remember, this is, on the vote, on the project today, the vote did not pass, but it was a majority of the meeting were in favor of it. So, and the problems have not gone away, and simply saying, the problems are going to be back before you again. So I think with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, it's seven needing its own.